I'm going to call the City Council, Springfield City Council work session to order with local.
Mayor Van Gordon.
Here.
Counselor Weber here, Counselor Mo.
Yeah.
Counselor Rodley here, Counselor Blackwell here, Counselor Doyle here, and Counselor Pictionary.
Here, thank you.
We've got one item tonight, uh, planning application fees with Mark Rust.
Good evening, Mayor and Council for the record, Mark Rust with City of Springfield Planning. I'm here to present to you tonight on the status of the planning application fees. I do have a PowerPoint presentation. I just put together information that's already in the packet. So there should be nothing new that's in the PowerPoint slides, just summaries of what you have hopefully already seen and looked through. Just a really quick background, we did present to you most recently on September ninth. That was focused primarily just on the comprehensive planning annexation fees. Prior to that, more generally on May twenty eighth of this year. And then originally our first presentation, um, when Portland State University first rolled out their results of their study was back in June of two thousand twenty-three. So just kind of to recap some of the dates. This is a lot of words on this slide, but this all is directly from your packet in terms of the direction that staff has gone back and compiled that we've received from council thus far. The new one that's added there on the bottom from our last work session was on looking for alternative ways to fund comprehensive planning or presenting alternatives for you to consider to funding comprehensive planning. So we'll get into more detail about that tonight. Just a reminder, we are focusing just on the planning application fees. It does not include an analysis of a lot of these other fees. I won't go through them, but they're all listed there. We've touched on that, um, multiple times before. And then again, just to highlight the idea that there's two different ways that we talk about being able to collect fees under state law. One is the average cost of providing service and the other is the actual cost of providing service. We have only, our fee structure currently is the average cost. We are proposing at least in draft form to do both of these depending on the application type. So splitting some that we would continue to collect average cost while others moving towards the actual cost. And then in your packet tonight, I have a series of questions that are laid out throughout the packet. And then they're summarized at the end. There's five questions total. And I plan to just kind of work through those tonight, um, providing you opportunity to discuss and, um, comment on. Our ultimate goal tonight would be potentially to get direction from you to move forward with, um, going to a public hearing with the draft planning fee schedule. We have not updated our planning fees for the last two years for the, in, in the spring of each year is when the, our broader fees come to the council for, um, annual increases if they're warranted. And so we have not included planning fees in those updates for the last two times. So, uh, one of the goals has been, has been to create a much more simplified planning fee structure. I actually modeled this very closely off of the city of Eugene's planning fee structure. This is only a snippet of it. The entire thing is the attachment in your packet tonight. And so within this just visually more simple, um, the technical structure of these fees are a lot more simple as well. For instance, um, just one I'll point out as an example for our site plan fee. Currently we have a per thousand square foot of building structure size that is an add-on to the base site plan application fee. We've gotten rid of that altogether. It's just a flat site plan fee. We are still proposing a two-tiered site plan fee depending on the size. So there's a simplified or a small site plan. And then a second tier to kind of your normal or large size site plan development. It's really the five hundred square feet and less type of small changes to an existing site or, um, development. So that's just one example, um, of the simplified structure of that. And so one of the questions and, and we can either touch on this now or in a little bit, I can get through this and we can kind of hit all the questions at once. If that works better, um, is are you supportive of this simplified structure? And in general, moving this forward in a draft format to a public hearing for the public to weigh in and comment on that. I will just note, there is one change I would suggest, and I've meant to change on this. And that is the fourth line down and is actually within this snippet on the slide, but it's the annexation fee itself. We would have intended that to also go to an actual cost of service. Pretty much how we determined in this schedule of which ones would go to an actual cost of service is anything that would go to a public hearing. And so it's, um, anything that's a type three or type four application. We would envision going to an actual cost of service because as you know and have experienced, some annexations can stream right through and not have any comment, maybe really quick and easy. So it would result in a small application fee where other annexations may be much more complex, have a much more involved public hearing. So we don't feel that's one that is easily averaged between those two. So charging an actual cost in those cases would also make sense in our mind. So that would be one in this table that I would change if we move that forward to a public hearing. So building off of where we left off last time with the comprehensive planning fee. As you're hopefully still aware or remember from last time, we have had this annexation fee to help fund comprehensive planning in the past. That's been suspended for the last couple of years. One of the questions I heard in the work session last time was having the council decide on what level would you want to potentially fund comprehensive planning with some kind of fee? And so I tried to provide a history, at least based on some averages of the last number of years, how much has been supported by that historic annexation fee for comprehensive planning? The rough number is about five percent or five point one percent. And that varies year by year. That's a average. So this is just a quick table of one through fifteen percent showing you some general numbers about how much based on the average comprehensive planning budget per year, again, which also varies. So that would be one decision point tonight. And then building off of deciding about how much of a percentage, um, you might want to try and fund of comprehensive planning through collection of fees. Then a second number, not to hopefully be too confusing, is a percentage that then you could add on to current application fees to help collect that money. And I'm kind of jumping between a couple of the items that are discussed in the memo. But, um, trying to really point to a number, I, I'm just going to use the five percent number as the example of around thirteen thousand dollars. So if council wanted to try and fund that five percent, um, then it would result in about a two percent fee being added to current planning applications to help generate that revenue for comprehensive planning. And I can elaborate that, um, in more detail if needed. We did explore a number of different types of options of ways for thinking about potentially collecting though, rather than that just percentage. I go through these five different options. Really in my mind, there's only, well, there's kind of three options because one of these five options is the existing or pre-existing fee of the annexation fee that, um, we're moving away from or haven't been collecting. And then option five is a potential mix of a couple of these. So they're really the three options within this, um, what we're presenting is, is the one I just talked about, which is actually option two. It's establishing a fee as a percentage of the applications that come in for other current planning applications. We did, and jumping back now to option one. We did briefly talk at the work session last time about looking at a regional approach to maybe how we could collect for comprehensive planning work that's done within the city and different areas of the city. So for instance, the North Gateway area or maybe the Jasper-Natron area. Without having the time to really go into detail analyzing that option, we feel it would be the most difficult option to try and figure out how to make it work and how to balance out the comprehensive planning work that's done and assign it to different regions of the city and then figure out how much that it would take to perform that work and then break it down by either acreages or number of applications within those regions to get it to be an equitable type of a solution. But that is an option that we could explore further if the council felt like it was worth, um, moving forward with. And then really the, um, the, the last option is potentially instead of, or in combination with, a percentage of current planning applications to create a fee is, is creating a, a flat fee for annexations instead of this tiered approach that we've had in the past. So we feel one, we could establish a maximum fee. So really large annexations didn't have some really large exorbitant fee. And then it could be tiered so and prorated for the smaller ones that it was, uh, much smaller fee like it is, has been historically. So those are kind of the options we looked at for the comprehensive planning. Just a couple more slides here and then we can get into some more discussion. The other subject that is related to a little bit of the decision around how you might want to collect or help support comprehensive planning, potentially with a percentage fee is the current tech fee. So we do currently collect a five percent technology fee on every current planning applications that submitted. For comparison, city of Eugene collects a nine percent. They just call it more generally an admin fee. If we were to say, transition the tech fee to a broader fee and then include some other things such as a comprehensive planning percentage, as well as looking at potentially adding a percentage to help fund what we consider kind of an unfunded mandate by the state in terms of having our, um, essentially one full FTE of our staff, dedicated to working the front counter at any given time and answering general phone calls that come in, not related to a specific development at that time. So part of goal one in the statewide planning program is citizen involvement. And part of that citizen involvement program is having that planner on duty to provide the general public information. And so potentially an admin fee could help cover a portion of that, what we call the planner on duty position that isn't directly attributable to, um, a development application. So with that, I'm happy to go back to the, um, the list of the five questions if we want, or we can, and we can rely on the, uh, the memo for that too.
Yeah, let's go back to the, perfect.
There.
So wants to jump in first. This feels like the, uh, the auctioneer approach. We'll just say yes to everything and wrap it up right now.
Perfect.
I'm done.
All right, go ahead, Joe.
So for me, I, I think question number one. I support that. I like a more simplified structure. And I think it meets our expectations as we spoke about. Revised fees are acceptable for proceeding to a public hearing. I believe they are. I like, I can't believe I'm really saying this, but I like how you're somewhat mirroring what Eugene does. But that's okay. I'll get over that. But I think that it, I think there's actually, instead of just that, and it's kind of foolish personal stuff. But I think though it would be beneficial for the development community. So they're not trying to have to guess and it's more standardized so they can operate knowing what's expected as opposed to switching back and forth to two different systems. So I think that would be beneficial to the development community. Do we want to set a target for funding the comprehensive work program for fee collection? I don't know if I'm ready to set a target yet. I'm willing to listen. Fee option to support, help fund the comprehensive planning, uh, program. Yes, but that kind of, it kind of meshes with number five. And I'm, I'm looking at that and that, the tech fee, when we put that in place, it was, it was very specific what that tech fee was going to go towards, very specific. It was to directly help the developers. Technologically speaking, you know, like larger printers, I, I remember, for example, things that would directly help them. And we're now talking about a admin fee, which now convolutes the intent of the original tech fee and fund a position. And which is completely different than what the main first, the concept of the tech fee. I don't know of any developer that liked the tech fee. So I guess it would probably best answer that is, should we get, should we, should we eliminate the tech fee? And now create an admin fee. And that's to me would be the, how it should be discussed. And so if you're support to eliminate the tech fee, tech fee, so we don't have to worry about whether or not Jeff's got to tell us where the tech fee money went, which has been ongoing for years. I think that would clean it up. And I don't know if the tech fee ever really did help developers directly a lot. But I'm willing to entertain an admin fee. You'd have to articulate to me the level of that fee such as nine percent. I don't know if nine percent is too much or not enough. But that's where I'm at.
Victoria.
So I want to start off by saying that, um, I really appreciate the work that you've put into this. And, um, when I first heard, I, I've been on vacation for a week, so I didn't really get a chance to get into this until last night or today. I kind of had a knot in my stomach and I thought, oh gosh, here we go. And when I opened this up, I was really, really pleased with what you came up with. I think you did a fantastic job. I think that you did exactly what I had asked for, um, especially in the simplification of it. I opened it up side by side with Eugene today, just to kind of look at the fees and look at the thing, the structures. And I think it's spot on. So great job. I'm, I really appreciate that. I know this comp fee has been kind of a thing. I, um, I liked either number three or number five on that. Number five seems like one that might be an option and I'd be willing to talk more about that. I don't want to make a decision on that right now, but I think those are two that we could talk about. And when I agree with Counselor Pictionary about, um, eliminating the tech fee and going to an admin fee, I think that people don't even question that nine percent with Eugene. So I think if we were at like seven and a half, depending on where, you know, you decide that needs to be, I think, I think that that's a fair and reasonable thing. I think people are used to that. I don't think that that's going to be too much of a, um, too much to handle. And I think that it, it makes sense. You know, you're paying that person that's at that counter and that's there for that. So, um, I'm open to that as well. I think five is probably too low. And I'm, believe me, I'm not a fee person, but I understand the work that goes into processing applications and getting those, um, to the right people and handling that, that paperwork. So, um, all I can say is I'm, I'm really pleased and, um, and I'm, I'm open to what other people have to say about it. So thank you.
All right, anybody else? Go ahead, Beth.
I just want to say I, uh, I agree with, uh, both with, uh, Counselor Doyle and Pictionary said. Those were all items that were in my notes here when I looked through this. Uh, option three and option five were also standouts to me for sure on the list. And also I would definitely agree with putting a cap on, they mentioned a cap on the, the annexation.
All right, go ahead, Steve.
Several years ago, I questioned the tech fee. Didn't know where the hell it was going. And we were accumulating that out there and buying equipment and stuff like that back then, which we needed. But again, I think it was misdirected, what we were calling it, by going to an admin fee by support committee.
All right, anybody else? All right, um, so I had a couple of comments. This looks fantastic. Um, so it's a really nice job. I like the simplified fee schedule, but when you go to cost to serve, can you talk when, for those options? Can you talk a little bit about that is us actually tracking our hours and then billing, billing the customer?
Correct. That is right. Um, so we would establish a deposit. And so we do this now with, um, PIP projects, a couple of other different types of, um, more engineering related applications where, and developers are used to this where they'll submit a deposit. And then basically it's like if you were to go hire a private attorney and you pay him a retainer upfront and they charge against it. And then if we go, in theory, we wouldn't go over, um, we would try and stay under and then refund them whatever's left at the end. But we already have also instituted a time tracking.
Okay.
We have, um, created project numbers for every single planning application that gets submitted, which is about two hundred applications a year. Um, so we're, we're now for every application, every day or week, we keep track of how many hours we've spent on every one of those planning applications by all the different staff that work on it. So even our engineering staff, our transportation, our survey staff all have access to those same project numbers. So we've already been doing this now as kind of a test for a couple of months. So then at the end, or at whatever point we issue a decision, let's say, and we say, okay, here's, here's how much time we spend on it. Here's the amount we'll take from your deposit and here's what you get back.
So we have the financial sort of instruments and internal processes and infrastructure in place to be able to successfully do this today.
We do, because we already do it, like I said, for other types of projects.
The, the other question that I had is when you think, when you think of the big complicated sort of planning projects that we have that involve, you know, the public, I could think, we've had a couple of this last year. How is the expectation going to be that the developer carry a hundred percent of the, our costs to deliver those? Or are we, you know, is there going to be kind of, we're, we're going to look at it and say, hey, this is kind of turned into a little bit of a science project. And then there's going to be some adjustments made on that, on the city side.
So we've worked with our city attorney's office on that question. And so for instance, it can be, we don't really have a problem with this here in Springfield, but I'm aware of it in other jurisdictions. And that is people that want to oppose a project know that dragging on a project can, time can kill a project. You know, it costs it so much money. So taking into account what is truly kind of the developer's responsibility within time. If a public hearing goes sideways and gets continued for weeks or something like that, that additional time that then staff has to spend on taking it back to another continued hearing or something like that isn't necessarily then attributed to the developer at that point. It's not on their dime. Really staff are the city at that point is kind of eating that cost. And so the, the city attorney's office is concerned about that and there's legalities around that doesn't all fall on the developer.
Okay, good. As long as we have, yeah, as long as we have a control that kind of naturally gives us a ceiling so that people are walking in there, um, wanting to develop in the city and not in having some sort of certainty for how, how long this could go. Okay, so I, that answered that question. The, the other, when I looked at the comprehensive, uh, fee collection, honestly, I ended up with number five too. I just didn't feel like having an additional fee was really recovering that much in the way of, in the way of costs and taking a look at that tech fee and then, you know, retooling it so that people, you know, that we got something a little bit clearer about how to, how to fund planning would make a lot of sense to me. I, I do like the discussion that folks are having, which is, hey, propose, you know, we want to hear more about what that actual level is, you know, it may not be nine percent. It could be seven percent. We're still curious for more information. The part that I want to make sure that we're, we account for is if we switch to an admin fee, we still have technology infrastructure that we need to maintain. And I don't know if we need an explicit carve out to make sure that we're still investing in our sort of planning infrastructure to make sure we're competitive or not. But I think that is a question I would love to hear a little bit more information about to make sure that if we introduce an admin fee, that doesn't turn into all people, that we've got that right balance of people and, uh, technology.
Yeah, and Jeff and I briefly talked about this, um, over the last week and, and thought about that. And I mean, really it would be up to Jeff at that point on how much gets spent here and there unless council did provide a specific carve out. But I think having the flexibility to have it not all be for FTE, let's say, but there'd be flexibility to use part of that for technology when it was appropriate.
Go ahead, Joe, and then we'll come back to Victoria.
Yeah, I concur with what the mayor said in regards to the use of the fee, the, the total figure. And there needs to strike a balance, but also we need to have some trust with our staff in regards to, okay, we're looking for a balance. It needs to, it needs to benefit the, the developers, but we also have costs that should be covered. So there's going to, there's, you're just going to have to find a sweet spot, but let council know where, where you're landing. So that way, when we have questions, which we get questions as to why this, how come we're getting charged this, et cetera, that we have, we can give them a, a logical answer, an answer that's more clear. And, um, back a little bit with the discussion here with you, Mark, in regards to the, um, fees. We shifted, you probably, we shifted to an attempt to go with a one hundred percent cost recovery. Claire back with Counselor Anne Malu, two thousand five, probably is when she was talking about that and really pushed that forward. And we started instituting a hundred percent cost recovery. Well, that understandably, uh, backfired in regards to all of a sudden, we have no projects. And so now we're kind of hedging our way back towards that. And I think there's a couple of things we need to keep in mind. Number one is that, yes, we have a cost, but anything that's developed in our city, unless it's a nonprofit, helps with our tax taxation evaluation of the city. If we, if we put a stop to all of our building because we're scaring them off, then we're not going to increase our taxation. And all of a sudden, we're, we're going the other direction. So there's, there's got to be a, a spot there that we got to find and not try to go a hundred percent cost recovery. Secondly, and it's, uh, I just wanted to bring this out in regards to, I think everybody has an understanding that staff, not all staff are created equal and not all staff have got, uh, equal efficiencies. And that some staff are probably going to get things done quicker than other staff. And I'm not calling out anybody negatively, but that's just human nature. And so that's something that, uh, needs to be watched while we're tracking time. Well, is this person's efficiency level costing five hours? And this person can do the same thing in two. And then the developer gets charged five. So I, I, I know it's really foggy, but, but that has to be, there's has to be some sort of oversight in regards to what's, what people are getting charged. And if a developer comes back and says, hey, how come it's so many hours? It never used to be this way. That should trigger some sort of, of look see and saying, okay, well, let's take a look to see if there was something in particular that cost more time and, and do that. So we can, you can go back to the developer and say, we looked at it. This is why.
And if I can just respond quickly to that, and one is I, I appreciate those comments for sure. And one of the things we've done since the new code adoption, and the code has facilitated us being much more efficient. But we have been that we're starting with basically all new code. We've had standardized templates and things like that. The code is now much more clear and objective. So there's not a lot of room to need to create all these discretionary findings about things. But the other thing now with this time tracking, even if it's average cost or actual cost, we're still tracking all that time. And this will give us the data every year to go back and, and recalibrate potentially the fees and also compare, you know, do some analysis within all those similar types of projects to say, okay, if these were two similar projects, but yet cost drastically different amounts, why was that? And then potentially, you know, make adjustments within those, our internal process.
That review is what I'm talking about. We need to keep an eye on that, which I think now we can tell developers we're, we're being really fair about it. So, thank you, Mark.
So I, I may have misunderstood, but I think there were two things that we were talking about when I said three and five. And I wasn't talking about the list that you have up right now. I was talking about the comprehensive planning fee. So if you, you know, backed up a few slides, that was the three and five I was speaking of. I just want to make sure it was clear on that. Whoop, yeah. You were there. There you go. Those are the three and five that I was talking about. Okay, so you knew that. The other thing is, uh, the, um, a lot of these fees that you came up with are, were based on these numbers that you've used, correct? And what I have noticed, and I looked at several other municipalities, is that they're very reasonable, that they're not out of line. And so if, if that's your actual cost, I think that's a fair, that's a fair cost to charge. So, um, it's good that we have kind of the ability to look at that next year, let's say, or whatever. But there's a couple that were, I think it was like the historic that, um, I, I'm wondering how many of those we get and like what's entailed in that because that's how many of those we get and like what's entailed in that, because that one seemed pretty significant in change. And wondering like, I'm just, I'm just curious about that one. I'm kind of an odd one. That's sort of an off thing. And we can talk about that when I meet with you too.
Okay. I can just say briefly, those were kept artificially low when the historic district was first created to incentivize people actually coming in to do historic applications. So it's, it's right sizing those. If, if it was felt by the council to still keep those artificially low, they, they could be, but it wouldn't be a hundred percent cost.
I just think that in, and when we go back to the, the admin fee, tech fee, I think the admin fee is going to be a lot easier to explain to people than the tech fee. Just by name alone. So thanks again.
All right. Anybody else?
So can I gather that, are we good to come back at a public hearing December 2nd with this? And then we'll bring back kind of the more specifics on the admin fee part of it as part of that public hearing package.
Yep. Perfect. Great. Thank you, Mark. We are adjourned from the work session. I'm going to call the regular session of the Springfield City Council to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon here.
Counselor Weber.
Here.
Counselor Mo. Counselor Rodley.
Here.
Counselor Blackwell.
Here.
Counselor Doyle.
Here.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Here. Thank you.
Please show me for the pledge of allegiance. There are two designated times for public testimony this evening under public hearings and business from the audience. If you're attending in person, please complete the request to speak card located at the front of the council chambers and turn them into the city recorder. If you're joining us online with a tablet, smartphone or computer and wish to speak at either of those times, please use the raise hand feature in Zoom. The order of public testimony is as follows. Anyone in the council chambers and then anyone who has raised their hand virtually. First item, please.
Mayor, the first item is the consent calendar.
Like to make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Second.
All right. Neil, could he call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Blackwell.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Aye.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero noes. Next item, please.
Next item is public hearings. You have two public hearings this evening. Public hearing number one is Comcast franchise extension. Nathan Bellis here for this item. This is a first reading.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. The item in front of you tonight is a request to conduct a public hearing and a first reading for an ordinance that extends an ordinance that grants a franchise to Comcast for telecommunications system, cable telecommunications system. This is one of many extensions that have happened over the last few years. This one being due to some turnover at Comcast of personnel that have been working on this franchise renewal. Hopefully this is the last extension and we can get these negotiations wrapped up. So I'm going to turn it over to you.
Are there, are there any questions about this? All right, I'm going to open the public hearing. I don't have any cards for this item. Do we have anybody raising their hand?
Appears no hands for this item.
All right, I close the public hearing. And this is no action requested, first reading only. Thank you very much, Nate. Next item, please.
The next item is the 2024 Justice Assistance Grant item, and Chief Shear is here for this one.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, my name is Andrew Shear. I'm the chief of police in the Springfield Police Department. And the item before you tonight is a public hearing on the proposed use of the 2024 justices grant. We rewarded the Department of Justice Local Assistance Grant for the amount of $18,107 this year. Those JAG grants are an annual non-competitive grant award designated to support public safety goals for the city. So this year we've decided to propose that the use of this grant funds are going to be for a handheld narcotics analyzer device. These devices allow us to set, test anything without opening the package. They'll go through plastic, they'll go through glass. They can test liquid. They've got a library of 1,500 different substances, both precursor chemicals and the dilute drugs. So this will greatly increase the safety for our officers and community members by not having to actually open these packages and risk contaminating the people that are in the immediate vicinity.
Are there any questions?
Not a question, more of a comment. I went out and did some research on these today and they look like really cool and very impressive machines. And I think it's a great idea to spend money on, on the safety of our officers.
Joe. Awesome. Thank you.
All right. Then I'm going to go and open the public hearing. I don't have cards for this.
No hands for this item.
All right, I'm going to close the public hearing and that's all that the chief needed. Next item, please.
Mayor, the next item is business from the audience.
I have no cards for business from the audience. If you want to speak to the council and you're online, please raise your hand.
Appears we have no hands for this item.
Next item, please.
Next item is Springfield Development Code Amendments Annexations. Haley Campbell is here for this item.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. So this is a second reading and hopefully adoption of the annexation code amendments. The last time I came to you, we had a work session on September 16th and a public hearing on October 21st. We had one public comment during that public hearing, but we did not receive any additional comments since that public hearing. We updated the staff report in your packet tonight to remove the yellow highlighting that was shown the changes between the Planning Commission and City Council hearings. So if adopted, of course, these amendments will reduce the cost to provide notice of public hearings and streamline the approval process for certain owner consent annexations. So just a reminder, the two big, biggest changes that were made from the work session and public hearing was that we changed the notice area from 300 feet down to 100 feet. And then we changed three options, which would not require a hearing for owner consent annexations. Those are if you are in the R1 district and designated LDR under 10,000 square feet. If you have a failing septic and as long as the property does not contain a goal five or goal seven resource, natural hazard, things like that. So in the packet, that ordinance is ready to go unless you have any questions for me.
Any questions?
Joe? Heavy sigh, but did, I thought, I could be wrong here, but I thought we discussed during that work session, put craftiness that the 300 foot rule and the, and the 100 foot rule was, that wasn't, okay, just checking. Get it to happen.
Back to that other part that you need to do. So.
To make a motion to adopt an ordinance amending the Springfield Development Code related to annexation, adopting a savings clause and a severability clause and providing an effective date.
Second.
Could he call the vote, please?
Yes, Counselor Weber.
Yes.
Counselor Mo.
Yes.
Counselor Rodley.
Yes.
Counselor Blackwell.
Yes.
Counselor Doyle.
Aye.
And Counselor Pictionary.
Yes, thank you.
Motion passes, six yeses, zero noes. Next item, please.
Any business from the city council?
You thought I was lying. No, I won't. I just want to say on the public record, I'm sure everyone knows, but tomorrow is election day. So please vote. Your vote is your voice and I will be downstairs tomorrow night as a observer for the ballot box in the last hour. And I know that there's going to be observers at different ballot boxes, which is a great way to volunteer and deal with like election night anxiety to be able to do something. So I just want to encourage everybody to get out and vote. You still have time. You cannot mail them, but you can get them into the ballot box by 8:00 PM. Thank you.
I would just like to piggyback on that. Today I spent three hours at Lane County elections observing how the process works and was a little confused and they actually took me through. And I was able to see how they have people from each party and they team them up together. So there's never a, a single party dealing with each step of the process and how it walks through. I can tell you that I felt very confident in Lane County and how they handle it and the, I, I just, I felt like it was, it was a really, because I mean, you know, we see a lot in, in the media and, and a lot of fears that come. And I can say that Lane County does a really good job of making sure that these elections are done well. So, thank you.
All right, anyone else? All right, next item, please.
Any business from the city manager?
Yes, just really quickly, I appreciate council's comments regarding Lane County elections and I echo those comments. My prior history was working in counties in Oregon and California. And the elections process is something that we take very seriously and we monitor very carefully. So I appreciate those comments and I appreciate everybody getting out and exercising their right to vote. I'm always, I'm always disappointed with lower voter turnout. In our country, there, it's kind of inexcusable not to cast your ballot. Finally, I wanted to recognize Chief Shear. You know, he did a quick presentation tonight regarding this new technology for the police department to be able to analyze narcotics. And I just really appreciate Chief Shear's diligence to officer safety. Just, he's always thinking of new and innovative ways to protect our officers and other people that might be coming in contact with these hazardous substances. It's not just officers. It could also be maybe an evidence technician or somebody even just in the department. So just wanted to highlight that. It's something that he's made the cornerstone of his leadership and I really appreciate that. As a city manager, it makes me feel good knowing that he's got the safety of our employees in mind. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Any business from the city attorney?
No business. Thank you.
All right. And then that is a wrap for the evening. We are adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a great night.